All right, it is 5:30. We'll call a meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening, everyone. Time, take the roll call, please.
Mayor King.
President.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Helly.
Present.
Posma.
Present.
Baker.
Right here.
Baskin. Fisher.
Present.
LaShusta. We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number one is the adoption of the motion with the deletion of item number seven. Looking for a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. The motion carries on to item number two, is a motion approving our minutes from our June 17th, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries item number three, under the consent agenda. Looking for a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. The motion carries. Under petitions and requests, we have item number four, is a resolution approving a contract for the assessment of pool conditions. Jason?
Honorable Mayor and Council, staff brought this item before council at a work session on June 17th, 2024, and council asked staff to bring it back to this meeting tonight for consideration. It's based around our concerns with the unknown status and condition of our swimming pool. And this year alone, we've run into quite a few repairs that were necessary to open the pool that were not necessarily in the budget. We also had some repairs that were written in the budget as well. But from what we've been finding, our goal with this process, if approved, is to create a comprehensive plan for future repairs and replacement of certain areas of the pool. The pool, or a pool evaluation and conditions and assessment is intended to provide an assessment of current conditions of our municipal pool facility and determine feasible options with costs for the future. Some of the objectives that would come from the assessment are understanding the conditions of the facility, review the overall operation performance of the facility, including attendance and cost recovery, recommend options for improvements, opinions for costs for the improvements, overall operations expectations, including potential impact on attendance, operating expenses and revenues, and provide a comparison character and cost for the option to replace the pool facility. We have received two quotes from companies to complete an assessment, and staff is recommending that the best proposal we received is from Waters Edge Aquatic Design. They will provide us with the best information for our municipal pool. Their proposal includes more clarity and detail on what they are going to assess and evaluate, and how they are going to report it back to us. So staff's recommendation this evening is asking council to award the bid to Waters Edge Aquatic Design in the amount of $17,500. This fee includes the three base items as submitted with their proposal. Staff is also asking for an additional, there's an optional additional assessment visit where they come back when the pool is empty, and they can get some additional information. That's optional, and we will identify whether we need to do that or not after we receive the initial assessment. The addition for the pool empty visit is $2,600. So the total is $17,500 for both, to clarify. And staff requests to fund the project with contingency funds, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Excellent. Thank you, Jason. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Seahan? I think it's going to be interesting to see who this comes back. The pool is 40 years old. I guess it's time for a plan. Looking for a motion for a resolution number four. Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Sure.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number five is a resolution approving an agreement for the school resource officer. Chief, Keegan.
This would just be a renewal for this upcoming school year. We've had a longstanding and I think beneficial relationship with the Austin Public Schools, with the SRO and the high school, extending beyond my 26 years with the department, and our LSSRO being here about 23. They handle a wide variety of calls, medicals, and other things within those buildings. They really give us a good eye on the ground. They're part of our radio system. They'll serve other schools if issues arise. And so for us, we are recommending, again, extending this agreement for another year with the public schools.
All right. Thank you, Dave. Any questions for the chief, counsel? Looking for resolution for item number five.
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yes.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number six is a resolution approving an ICM agreement with New Tech Biosciences LLC. Stephen?
Yes, we present these from time to time to counsel for review. It's an agreement with New Tech to regulate their flow and strength from their facility and what they discharge to the wastewater treatment plant. We've had an interim agreement with them since their startup. We've been working with them to try and regulate their flow. We have staff at the treatment plant that will work directly with the facility to help them work through processes to decrease flow or decrease strength. In this case, we worked with them to decrease foam. There's a lot of foaming in the system that was causing irregular readings with our sewer meters, so that has seemed to be resolved. And we feel like over their course of initial startup, that we're comfortable with the flows and things and strengths that are coming to us at this time. So we believe we're now ready to enter into a longer term agreement. Before you tonight is a three and a half year agreement, which has an expiration date of December 31st, 2027. A couple of the items that have changed in this agreement from their temporary or interim ICM agreement is that their allowable flow is increased from 30,000 gallons per day to 35,000 gallons per day. Their total suspended solids is increased from 50 pounds per day to 100. And their TKN, or total nitrogen, is increased from 50 pounds per day to 85 pounds per day. So with those changes, we would recommend approval of this three and a half year ICM agreement.
Very good. Thank you, Stephen. Counsel, any questions, Mr. Lang? Looking for resolution for item number six?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Deleting number seven, we're on to number eight, is a series of motion ordinances requesting approval for an ordinance change related to massage therapists and massage establishment licensing. Bree?
Mayor and council members, before you, I have the ordinance for the massage therapist and the massage establishment changes. We spoke about this at the last work session on June 17th. So the clerk's office is requesting approval of the ordinance, an adoption, and then resolution for summary publication of the ordinance. Let me know if you have any questions.
Counsel, any questions for Bree? Then looking for, we'll take them one at a time, a motion for item 8A, preparation of the ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries 8B for adoption of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Thomas?
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Ordinance passes 5-0, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom, and for item 8C, for summary publication of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yes.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number nine is a resolution accepting these two donations to the city of Austin. A gift of $500 from the Friends of the Nature Center for the Culture and Arts Commission, and $500 from the Cedar River Watershed District for the Roosevelt Bridge mural, and that's under the Culture and Arts Commission. We thank them both for their $500 donation. Looking for a resolution to accept them.
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
You bet.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number 10 is a resolution declaring a structure at 1906 Third Ave. Northeast as hazardous?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yes.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Moving on to the citizens addressing the council. There are, in my observations, some citizens in the audience today. And I'm guessing you want to chat with us. So whoever wants to speak first and give us, step to the microphone, give us your name and address, and what concerns or compliments you might have. Ken Gorman looks like a good spokesperson. Hi, welcome. What's your name and address, please?
My name is Becky Rector, and I live at 1707 Third Ave. Northeast. A week ago Saturday, most of us in this hall here, we woke up early in the morning with tons of water in our basements. Some of it sewage, some of it clean drainage. And some people have never had water in their basement in over 30 years. So we're trying to find out what caused that problem, and it wasn't just rain.
Stephen, you want to speak? What more people to speak first? I'm guessing they're here for the same reason. Anybody else have anything to add to that? Hi, their name and address, please, sir.
My name is Steve James. I live at 1902 Fifth Ave. Southeast. I've been there for 49 years. This is the fifth time that we've had sewer backup in our basements. There's been nothing done to rectify this situation. It started back in the 70s and 80s. Here we are in the 2020s, and we've gotten nowhere. I have regutted my basement five times. I'm too old for this. We need a solution to this, so. I had a sub pump running for over 17 hours last Saturday. The sewer never went down. It just kept going up and up and up, never stopped. I never caught up. At midnight on Sunday, I finally went to bed. About an hour later, something gave way, and all the water went down the sewer in a matter of a half an hour. What I couldn't do with a sub pump in 17 hours went down the drain in less than an hour. Why did it take so long? What happened? We need some answers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, you said midnight on Sunday? Midnight on Sunday?
It happened Saturday morning.
It suddenly went down at midnight on Sunday?
No, no, I went to bed at midnight. It happened after that. My wife-
Saturday. When I saw that city was out there by the ditch doing something about 12:30, quarter to 1:00, I walked out there, saw they were working, came back in.
12:30, quarter to 1:00 a.m. on Saturday morning?
Sunday.
Sunday morning. I don't know how long they've been out there, but it wasn't long. And within half hour, most of our water had left. We have had, in these five times-
Barb James, same address. In previous times, we've had the city out there working their tails off to get this opened up. We saw no one, right, Beth?
No.
No one, until I saw them at 1 o'clock. And that's negligent, as far as I'm concerned, especially when they finally got it and we saw it go down like it did. You know what? Like, Steve, I'm too old. You just, and no one should have to deal with this. It's time. If you can't reroute that ditch or do something different to help the people that work and live in that area, I mean, something's got to be done. After five times, I would assume, in how many years? 30, 40? You haven't figured it out yet? That's it for me.
And for sales sign in my house, too.
Oh, boy. Ken, you keep getting the-
That's okay. I'm Ted Slickter. Live at 1902 Fourth Ave. Southeast. And I had the same problem. And I used to live in Blooming Prairie, and when this happened up there, when we had a backup, they covered it, the whole city. They paid for everything. And that's my question. Does Austin have insurance, like other cities, for this problem? And I'd like an answer.
Once we hear everybody, we'll get you an answer here. Thank you.
Are they gonna cover?
I'm gonna let our engineer speak once everybody else speaks, so we have something to be-
Are they gonna cover our problem?
I will let the engineer speak to you after we hear everybody speak. So please, if you could take a seat, please. Ken Gorman is waiting. His turn. No? All right, we're good.
Okay.
If you're good, we're good. And here he comes.
Ken Gorman, 1803 First Ave. Northeast, Austin. I didn't come here necessarily to speak, just wanted to get more information on, you know, what took place or why. We've been very fortunate in the 39 years we've been there. This is the first time it's ever happened for us to have water come up through the sewer or the drain. We don't have a finished basement, but we, you know, we did lose a hot water heater, washer, dryer, unlike many of these other ones that have finished basements throughout our neighborhood, too, that carpet, furniture, bedrooms, waking up and standing in it, so. I just happened to come home that night after picking up a daughter at the airport at midnight, and we got about 1:40, we came into the house. And I drove through rain all the way from Austin to the cities and back. So we did notice that there was some standing water in the window wells, so we did go down. And at 1:40, for us at our house, it had just started. We had checked with another neighbor, and she claimed that they hadn't had anything yet, but I didn't know if she had really checked or not, but later on, she did have water, so. A lot of them in our area were at least six and a half inches there. We do not have a sump pump in our basement. And like I said, 39 years, I've never had that issue. Like, James, I, five times, I- That's, I'm bad enough with what we had there, so. But I'm just here to see what others have to say and what the engineers have to say. Our street was redid in three years ago, so. Thanks for them all.
Thank you, Ken. Yeah.
Hi.
Hi there.
I'm Courtney Natician, and I live at 1909 Fifth Ave. Southeast. And I just came here, same issue, but I advise some members of the city to come drive down our block and also the 18th Street Southeast block. You can see the amount of dumpsters in every single driveway. If they haven't been picked up already, they are there, and then they go to the next house. The damage is extensive that we've experienced, and again, like everyone else here, we're just looking for answers. You know, we've been here for 10 years and not a lick of water in our basement, so standing sewage water coming up from the drains, you know, we lost everything, so.
Sorry. Yeah. Sorry you had to go through everything you went through, folks. I know it's, you're, I don't know what age you are, but you're always too old for that kind of problem, so I appreciate you coming here today. Maybe we got some answers from Mr. Lang. I know it was a heck of a rain event, but Stephen, what do you have for the folks?
No good answers. There's nothing that I'm gonna tell you tonight that's going to be able to snap our fingers and solve the problem. As you mentioned, it's something that's been going on for 50 years. That's too long, but it's not something that we're going to fix tonight. So the first thing that we're doing is we're gathering information. We're, we we're gathering information to map the area that was impacted. The ways that we're currently gathering that information is we're doing an Facebook online survey. If you're interested in going to the city of Austin website for you and any of your neighbors to fill out that survey, there's just, it's three questions to ask about how you were impacted during this last event. That's one way that we're gathering information. We also are working with Austin Utilities to gather the number of phone calls that they received related to sanitary sewer, and we're more marking down those addresses. We're, during the event, a lot of our questions were directed, calls are directed to the LEC, and then they're distributed out to our Public Works Department from there, so we're gathering those calls that came in and those addresses that reported different issues. We had direct calls to our Public Works, and then as was mentioned, we've been driving around the area to look at and document kind of the extent in both the southeast and the northeast of where the backups occurred. So that's the first thing that we're trying to do, to determine the extent of the impact. We implemented our sump pump inspection program in 2018. We started in the southeast. Many of you are familiar with that. And we thought, we anticipated that much of this ground, this, so water gets into the sanitary sewer system through either inflow or infiltration. Infiltration means that water is filtered through the soil and then gets into the pipes, so it takes time for that water to migrate down through the soil. The other option for water to get into the sewer system is inflow, and inflow is quick and fast. Inflow means there's a sump pump directly connected to the sewer line or sewer drain. That is what we anticipated was happening, is sump pumps, beaver systems. We came through and did our inspection in 2018. And sometime later, for the folks in the northeast, it was probably 2022 or something like that. And we did not, we found about 10%. 10% of our inspections, just speaking about the southeast, and the northeast was likely very similar. So forgive me for not being specific to your area, but in the southeast, we inspected a little over 1,500 homes, and we found 160 had direct connections to the sanitary sewer. So that was, that was less than we were expecting, because like you see, the water comes up very quickly and impacts a large area. The, we're seeing the areas that were described tonight, even, so the area from Fourth Ave. Southeast to Seventh Ave. Southeast, that all drains toward the open ditch to a main trunk main along the open ditch, and then it flows west toward the railroad tracks and the wastewater treatment plant. From Third Ave. North, that flows into a different system, Third Ave. Southeast. That flows north toward Oakland Ave., where it's collected by the dam and taken into a different system. And then the northeast area that was talked about, Third Ave. Northeast is a funnel. Many of the avenues in the northeast are collected and funneled toward Third Ave. It then goes underneath Oakland into a trunk main, so. So it's three different systems that are all being impacted differently, or impacted the same way. But they're, the systems are acting a little bit different. They're just, they are not sized to handle the amount of inflow that is coming. We thought that inflow is coming from sump pumps. That, with our program, that's, should be eliminated. Hopefully, people didn't go back and hook them back in afterwards, but one thing we did find, we're finishing up this year our citywide sump pump inspection program in the northwest. And we have plans to come back and bother you again in the southeast. But the bother is to try to find a solution. We, we found through happenstance or through luck, there are, we found a home on Seventh Ave. where typically tile drains around your house drain into a sump pump and then is pumped outside. We found a home on Seventh Ave. Southeast and a home on Fourth Ave. Where those tile drains are directly connected to the sewer service. So that is direct inflow going right into your sewer service and into the sanitary sewer main. That's, that's a very, the sump pumps were kind of the low hanging fruit. They were an easy thing for us to inspect. They were a relatively easy thing for homeowners to fix. This issue that we're going to come back and look for next, these footing drains that are directly connected into your sewer services, they're a much more difficult thing to repair, to fix, and they're a much more difficult thing to find. But we think, we think that's our next low hanging fruit item to look for, to, again, eliminate that surge of water that's getting into the sanitary sewer system. We have inspected our city mains out in the street. We've inspected all of our manholes. We've looked for direct connections, things like that. We're not finding those in the, in the city collection system. Yes, we'll likely be out there lining sanitary sewer mains, doing, correcting the city-owned infrastructure. But the next thing I see is us inspecting sewer services and trying to find those direct footing drain connections, so. It's, unfortunately, it's a slow process. We do plan on coming back, looking for more, trying to identify areas. But again, it's not something that we're going to be able to fix overnight. If I can get a clarification on the time, I wrote down, the sewer went down at 1 a.m. on Saturday. That should be 1 a.m. Sunday.
Sunday.
Yep, okay. Because it rained Friday night, rivers, so. So Ellis Ditch was down and nearly back in its banks by Saturday afternoon, right? But it was still coming up, the sewer drain. So, so that tells, it's not coming from Ellis Ditch. It's coming from other water getting into the sewer system somewhere else. And that's where these footing drains-
It was flooded then, because we're a block from there, and our road was flooded till Saturday night.
Fifth Ave.?
18th Street.
18th Street, okay. But I think, I think Ellis dropped, Ellis Ditch dropped faster than your sewer mains dropped.
Yes.
Right? Your sewer services and your basements.
Then somebody came in and did something, and down it went.
We, so-
There are stations in that area?
There is not. There is not.
There was, there was a city truck. I looked on my phone. I just happened to catch it on my doorbell camera. 1:30, they left, 1:30 a.m., they left the pump, the city pump.
We typically pump sewer and dump it into Ellis Ditch behind Ellis, at the little cul-de-sac behind Ellis. By the time we went to go back there, I don't think we could get to the manhole that we normally pump from because it came up so high. Did it come up higher than you've ever seen?
The worst it's ever been.
Yep. Yep, that's what we were seeing as well. Marking, you know, documenting how far it came up toward Fifth Ave. is essentially, we hadn't seen it up that high before. And so you look east toward the airport and east of the airport, you know, that has stayed rural. There haven't been, you know, I don't think we could point to a major development that's occurred east, east, that would increase rainfall in your area. I think it was just the nature of this storm really impacted, which caused higher water than we normally see. We, you know, the Cedar River Watershed and so SWCD, they are working on impoundments upstream of Ellis, upstream of Dobbin's Creek. One spot that we have identified is trying to find a water storage area upstream on Ellis Ditch as well. Somewhere east of the airport to try to hold some of that water back. We haven't been successful in identifying a spot or identifying a farmer that's willing to give up farmland for something like that, but that is on our radar as another possible solution to slow down the volume of water coming into Austin and Sixth Ave. and your areas. So that's what I have for you tonight. Don't know if counsel has any other questions, or if there's any follow-up that you'd like to entertain.
Name is Beth Hewson. I live at 618th St. Southeast. Last time this happened, in 2001, I worked quite extensively with one person here, and he came back with the same thing. We don't have a sump pump. We have a portable one. We throw in the window and pump, so we have no pit. And he was the one that said, well, it could be coming in from, your house was tiled around that. And I said, I didn't tile it. I've lived there 51 years. The owner, the person that built it, tiled it. Why, and now like what you said, you hope the people that have the beaver systems didn't turn them back on. What do we do? Why do we have to cover the cost of something that should have been inspected by the city when these houses were built and not let happen? And so do we have to pay, if you come back now and say, oh, you have that problem with the tiling? If you come back now and say, oh, you have that problem with the tiling, I can't afford to fix that at my age. So, what happens? I mean, this is where I feel like we're kind of caught in between a rock and a hard place, because if there is a fix, it shouldn't be us that has to cover the cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen, got any response to that? I wonder if it's even a code thing back fifty years ago, was the code to tile drain into the storm waters? I don't know.
The service that we found on Fourth Avenue southeast, it looked like the footing tile had been broken into or, the service was broken on the top, and that's where the lines came in. Depending on what shoes you're in, we could look at that and say, oh, looks like maybe they called the inspector out for the inspection and then broke into the line after the fact. You know, so, everyone could use a different lens in how you look at it. So, it's hard to go back seventy years and know what was done, what was looked at. We're just, we're stuck with what we have today.
Can I just ask a clarifying question and make sure I understand? This issue has happened before with a heavy rain event and sewer water backing up into homes in the neighborhood. The city thought that a likely culprit was sump pumps and beaver systems draining into sanitary sewer. We spent money and time inspecting house by house by house and hopefully eliminating that. And then, we had another big rain event and even worse sewer backup. And because we're fairly confident that it's not sump pumps and beaver systems, we now think that it's possibly tile systems draining directly into sanitary sewer. Is that correct, Stephen?
That's one very likely culprit, yes.
Is it possible that one or two or three homes with this tile drain directly into sanitary sewer is causing all this problem, or is it likely to be fairly widespread?
All of the homes were built during a common period of time, so I think it's widespread, just that was a standard during that building period.
Okay. And then, my last question is, I heard from one of these residents asking about the city's liability for damages. How does that work in Austin? What is our current system? Are you passing that off to our city attorney?
The right one to answer, but I'll just say, and anyone else can add to it, is that typically with a sewer backup, if, in a normal situation, if there is a blockage in our sewer main or we can't show that we did our routine maintenance, the city has some liability there. If it's a sewer service, it then falls on the homeowner. In a situation like this where it was Mother Nature, an act of God, it was a volume of water that is just not designed for, we would never design for that volume of water anyway. I don't believe we would be responsible in a situation like this.
League of Minnesota Cities confirmed that with us. Our insurance carrier said this is basically an act of nature, and there is one of them exclusions in any policy you might have, even if you had sewer coverage, and this would not be covered by our insurance company.
So, it just falls on the homeowner's policy?
Is there a possibility of adding a lift station to the neighborhood, Stephen?
So, the trunk line that runs up Sixth Avenue is a twelve-inch line. No, no, our downstreams, if we added a pump station to handle the volume of water, we'd just be pushing it onto the next area. We need to solve where the water's coming from and fix it there instead of upsizing all of the pipes.
Sure.
My name is Jerry Wackels. I live on 1705 Third Avenue Northeast, and entered thirty years. Never had a drop of water in there, in the basement, come up to the sewer, just like everybody else said. But when we had the floods, 2004, 2008, we never had a drop of water. We had a brand-new street put in a year and a half ago. They put everything in new, and now we got the problem. I got, what do you do? Can you leave? We were lucky we were home to get the water out of there. Took all the carpet backing out, sixty yards, it was all finished off. Now I gotta cut the sheet rock out. I mean, it's expensive. I'm sure it's twenty, twenty-five thousand. You know, I have some sewer backup coverage, but about half of that. Though it is concerning.
Sure.
Do we stay home then? Don't go anyplace anymore? You know, in case this happens again? It smells in there, even though it's sewer water, so.
In my own home with thirteen inches of water in two days, I've never had water in forty years in that house, never, sump pumps never gone off and the sump pumps going off. There was a significant rainfall. It certainly wasn't an act of God or Mother Nature didn't help us.
Saturday morning, you know, the five inches. Then we come and clean it all out, got it all out of there, and then that rain came in the afternoon. The streets were flooded. I mean, I was out there at three o'clock in the morning, and it was a half there by Holy Cross Church, right there where it all gathered, and all of a sudden, just like that, like somebody flipped the switch, it was gone. And it came up in the basement through the sewers. And we cleaned everything up, and in the afternoon, we thought we were, you know, home-free, had the fans going, and then that inch and a half of rain came in fifteen minutes. Walked in there and looked in the basement, three inches in there again, and the streets were all flooded, leases deep there by the church. So.
Yes, the unfortunate news is checking with League of Minnesota Cities and our liability is, I appreciate what you're going through, Mr. Wackels, and all your neighbors, but I don't think there's gonna be any liability on our side of the city other than your homeowners' insurance. I hope you have decent homeowners' insurance and can help offset those costs, but feel bad absolutely for what you're going through. It's just a-
That was all finished off nice. It's a nice townhouse, it was anyway, and then how all that happened, I mean, so unfortunate. Thank you all.
One of our sump pumps never ran.
Yeah, it's significant rainfall, no doubt. Significant rainfall, for sure. Anything else, Stephen?
Just that Third Avenue Northeast, that by Holy Cross, that's a new problem. So, we are gonna map that area, see if we can decipher anything from the information that we collect, and yeah, we'll go from there.
We don't have houses that are tiled on that, in the northeast part of town, like they do on the southeast.
Sure.
So, that's always been a low-lying area. I mean, they've lived there for thirty, we're close to thirty, and that corner right by those condos and Holy Cross always has, when it rains, and it doesn't have to rain hard, that's where it sits.
Yep, and so, you mentioned the street project, and I'll guarantee that the surface water that you're seeing on the road versus the sanitary sewer backups, those systems are not connected. They're not connected in that area for sure, from Oakland Place or, yeah, to Nineteenth Street. So, why this is now getting some sewer backups, we'll have to, we'll research that.
But if they knew that was a low-lying area, when they redid the street, why didn't they fix the problem?
The line going, we upsized all of the storm sewer lines underneath the street, but the line going underneath Oakland Place is still a restriction. Sometime in the future, that line under Oakland Place will need to be upsized from a thirty-inch to like a forty-eight-inch pipe, because many of the pipes that we put in on Third Street, Third Avenue to handle the storm water, were forty-two-inch size pipes, and now we have a restriction downstream going underneath Oakland Place.
Stephen, I have a question. So, why is it that some of the folks on Fourth, Fifth, Sixth, Seventh, Eighteenth Street got water and some didn't? So, say Seventh Avenue Southeast, where my parents live, their sump pump ran nonstop, no water in the basement. Three houses down, Dan Sparks gets a couple feet of water in his basement. Why is it that maybe some of your neighbors didn't get water and some did if it's all backing up? How is it missing some houses?
Again, it'll be interesting to see that as we start to map it out. Hopefully, we get good information and feedback from our survey, but the only thing offhand I could explain that by is the basement elevation of one home is gonna be different. Every home has a different basement elevation, so whoever has the lowest basement is gonna get impacted by sewer backup first. So, the only thing I could assume is that those basements are that much different in elevation as to why one person did not get impacted and a couple doors down, someone
You know, I think we did a lot of good things in the last twenty years with flood mitigation, but we clearly got some work to do. We got water on North Main, we got sewage, we got a problem with the waste treatment plant. We've spent forty million bucks in the last twenty years, and we haven't gotten there yet. And so, there's, I mean, there's clearly some work we gotta do here, and I think we gotta think about, you know, we spend a lot of time, I think, talking about foolish things, like, in my opinion, the complete streets policy, when we should be talking about complete wastewater treatment policies, good sewer, you know, let's address our sewers, let's just, I think we learned an important lesson here, and that's, we're just not there yet.
We had a record, it was our fifth highest water in Austin this last flood. I think the flood mitigation efforts on North Main and the removal of homes and the berms, engineered berms have certainly, certainly held. Yes, there's always work to do. I think those holding ponds, impoundments out in the middle of people's fields certainly helps slow the Dobbin's Creek down. Yeah, there's, I think this one appears to be, it's a sizing issue with that stormwater pipe as we go, and those improvements have to be made, there's no doubt. As the road projects come up or whatever it might be, we need to prioritize those, so. I think there's obviously good money spent, yes, there's work to be done, but this is just unfortunate that we got thirteen inches of rain in a few days. And I'm sorry you got what you got in your basements. I hope that it can be resolved and doesn't happen again, and city, street, and engineering department's gonna do their best to map it and work it out. So, thank you all for coming.
I think, did I get everyone's addresses that was impacted? If you were impacted, did I get everybody's addresses? Did you have?
Oh, I got my granddaughter's house.
Okay.
If you want to take them outside, just collect them as your way out, just talk to Holly and give her your address, please. Thank you. All right. Isaac, on to honorary council member comments. Anything, brother? Nothing to report? Thank you. Reports and recommendations. Craig?
Thank you, Mayor. We had Blandon and University of Minnesota Extension had a ripple effect exercise that we participated on, myself, Chief McCookin, Randy Hoffman from the Park and Rec Department, to look at the ripple effect of the Oaxacan basketball tournament that's held here in Austin. Really great exercise, great outreach. Probably nothing warms our heart more than seeing our parks utilized so fully, and so we'll get that report and pass it on to council, but a great outreach to ethnically diverse component of our community. So, I'm gonna pass that along, and we'll get the report to you when it's completed.
Very good. Thank you, Craig. Anybody else have anything? Department head?
No.
All right, on to city council. Paul?
Speaking of flooding, I would like to thank fire, police, all the city staff. As I drove around and gawked like some of the other residents did, they put in a lot of hours cleaning up, directing traffic. When utility guy was out on the corner of the county shop directing traffic and the pouring rain, just thank you to everybody who worked hard all weekend to keep residents safe. So, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Jeff?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Jeff?
Chuck.
Mike?
Yeah, just kind of want to echo Paul's thoughts. I know a lot of people, you know, came in on vacations, days off that they had scheduled. It was over the weekend, a lot of overtime put in. You know, fortunately, we definitely still had some houses flood. We heard from some of those folks tonight, and my heart definitely goes out to them. I also know that a lot of the hard work those, our city staff did prevented a lot more damage from being done, and so I don't want to lose sight of the fact that we do appreciate that, and we're gonna learn from this event and make some adjustments that will hopefully continue the forward progress of less and less flooding in Austin.
Thank you, Mike. Laura?
Yeah, and I would echo that. When the big water events happen, it's never convenient, and as always, I was proud to see Austin people, whether it be city staff, county staff, or just ordinary neighbors, helping each other, doing what we could to hold back the water and cleaning up together. So, I want to just remind parents that taking your kid to a park, it is heartbreaking when you see that yellow caution tape around and realize that you can't go play on it, but please don't tear it down and play on it, because if the tape is up there, that playground is dirty, and you do not want your kids anywhere near it. So, please respect that as our Parks Department cleans up some of those playground areas. I want to announce that the Matchbox Children's Theater is partnering with the Culture and Arts Commission. We received a grant from CMAC for $10,000, so they're putting on a special program all summer called Exploring Belonging and Community Through Theater. So, area youth will be spending time learning about theater and connecting it to community, and city leaders are also spending time with those students, helping them make the connection between arts and culture and future careers and daily life. So, Mayor King kicked off that program for us last week. I appreciate his time and others that are scheduled to serve later this summer. I also attended the League of Minnesota Cities Conference. The statewide conference was held in Rochester last week, and I want to make sure everyone knows that Austin's New Tech Project was shouted out at the general session as a innovative project. So, as usual, Austin's attracting good attention, and then I can also confirm that Austin is not alone as a community in struggling with housing, employee recruitment and retention, funding for various projects, and racial and equity initiatives. Those are topics that cities of all sizes were grappling with, and some good ideas, some fresh takes, and just the encouragement of the fact that it's not that we're doing something wrong, it's that the whole state is struggling in these areas. So, that's what I have.
Thank you, Laura. Appreciate it. And it's difficult to celebrate anything after the neighbors just told us the impacts of those high waters in their basement, but we do want to recognize the good work of good city staff over there, sometimes many decades of service, so the July anniversaries are before us here. Lance Ellingson, thirty-five years of the wastewater treatment. Todd Clennan, chief or captain of our police department, twenty-five years with the PD. Stephen Lang, engineering, twenty-three years. Congratulations, Stephen. Brian Blake, police, eighteen years. Jim Halsey with the fire, seventeen years. Sam Schuiler, police, seventeen years. Joe Mashing, John Mashing, street department, twelve years. Aaron Heimer, Arena, with ten years. Dustin Hicks, also with the PD, eight years. Brendan Bustad, street department, six years. Sidney Weesinger, Nature Center, five years. Carrie Harsted with the PD for four. Lauren Bachan, planning and zoning and building, for three years. Christian Wangen, engineering, three years, and Evan Walker with the library for two years. So, we certainly appreciate all those folks and their longevity and what they're doing out there for the public. So, again, it's difficult to celebrate anything at this point, but we do want to recognize those employees doing the good work for those many years. So, thank you. With that, I'm guessing I'm looking for a motion to adjourn to our meeting on July fifteenth at 5:30.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.